Welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's September 7, 2017 meeting. For all in attendance, please note that our meeting today is being livestreamed on the ncpc.gov website. We do have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order and proceed with the agenda as has been publicly noticed. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and just two things. One, we had a field trip late this morning to the Smithsonian to look at their South Mall plan. And first, I want to thank Ann Trobridge and her colleagues for their usual hospitality. It was very informative, and it was actually very informative in terms of the size and the scale, the complexity of this very large project. So that was really good to see that and understand it firsthand. Next, I do want to note that our longtime colleague, Deborah Young, who is the Director of NCPC's Office of Administration, is retiring. And so I would like to join, if she would join me at the podium for the usual roasting.[86.11][86.11](Laughter). We are happy for Deborah that after 39 years of federal service, 25 years with the National Capital Planning Commission, she is retiring to spend more time with her husband, two sons, and four grandchildren. When I was appointed in 2009 by President Obama, Deborah was the Commission's secretary, and she is the one with whom I most frequently, sometimes almost daily, interacted. That included my periodic running ideas by her, and sometimes she would approve and say, yes, that's a good idea. Other times, she would simply look at me with raised eyebrows, and no other words were attached, but the expression was signal enough that I may want to rethink my idea. A year or more ago, she handed the Secretariat reins over to Julia Costa for heavier, more administrative duties, and she couldn't do them both, do everything, and she has moved into as Director of Administration to handle those duties with all the commitment and excellence that we had seen before. But as her office adjoins mine, and as we have had more than one argument over the thermostat that we share, I've still been subject to her raised eyebrows on occasion. So I will personally, we all will miss Deborah, I will personally miss Deborah very much. So we do have a resolution that I'll read. Whereas Deborah B. Young began her federal career August 26, 1979, at the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, formerly the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare. Whereas Ms. Young advanced through the ranks of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in various administrative and management capacities through May of 1992. Whereas Ms. Young was detailed to the National Capital Planning Commission Office of the Secretariat in May of 1992 through December of 1992. Whereas Ms. Young formally joined the National Capital Planning Commission on December 27, 1992. Whereas Ms. Young served as Office of Secretariat in the Commission for well over 20 years as confidential assistant, it is confidential, right?
Yes.
Executive assistant and executive officer through September 22, 2012. Whereas Ms. Young consistently ensured that the Commission had requisite information and materials to make informed planning decisions. These decisions often involved high-profile projects such as the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Visitor Center, National Law Enforcement Officers Museum, U.S. Patent Office Portrait Gallery, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Farms and Explosives Headquarters, Department of Homeland Security Consolidated Headquarters, and the Martin Luther King Jr. National Memorial, to name but a few. Whereas Ms. Young provided invaluable guidance and support to the Commission and staff to ensure the Commission meetings were conducted in an effective, accurate, and respectful manner. Whereas Ms. Young served with distinction for five years as Director of Office of Administration, enhancing the management and administrative programs. And whereas Ms. Young oversaw significant information technology upgrades to improve the agency's cybersecurity posture, developed and aligned the agency's budget with the annual performance plan, guided the development or update of various policies and procedures to improve efficiencies and effectiveness, and effectively administered the agency's human resources program as a means to maintain a highly capable, motivated, and diverse workforce. Therefore, be it resolved, on September 7, 2017, the members of the Commission and staff of the National Capital Planning Commission expressed their sincere appreciation to Deborah B. Young for her 25 years of dedicated service to the Commission, and wish her much happiness and success in her future endeavors. Thank you.[332.12][332.12](Applause). And we have, as an expression of our gratitude, this very handsome. Please say a few words.
Thank you, Chairman Bryant. It's been a very pleasure of mine. I have served under five chairmans, I've served under three executive directors, and it's been a real pleasure. I've enjoyed the time that I've spent here at NCPC, and it will be a big transition for me to transition into retirement. I generally get here around 6:00 every morning because I work out every morning before I start my daily work schedule. So I said to someone yesterday that it will be an adjustment, but I think it will be a great adjustment.[390.52][390.52](Laughter). I don't think I'll get up and come here when I'm not supposed to be here. So, thank you all, it's been a pleasure working with all of you, and I will miss you.[402.81][402.81](Applause).
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I guess I may be, I think I may be one of the only ones who've seen Deborah come and now see her go. So I've seen her through her whole tenure, and she has been a delight, and I'm just glad that she'll get a chance now to be with her family more and take care of the challenges that she faces there. Glad for her.
Please.
I know we could all go on and on about Deborah, but I just want to say that when you hear stories of people losing faith in government, they haven't met Deborah. She is the exemplar of professionalism and grace. And where is she? I lost her.[448.53][448.53](Laughter). I can't make eye contact with her. She's like, back to work, I got work to do. But I just want to say for the record, she's extraordinary, and she will be missed.
Oh, she did.[461.31][461.31](Laughter). Make for her.[463.31][463.31](Laughter).
Agenda item number two is the adoption of the proposed schedule for the Commission meetings in 2018, which I believe have been previously sent to you. As folks know, we do meet on the first Thursday of every month, except for August, let's see, except for July, when the Commission will meet on July the 12th to make allowances for the holiday. And then there is no meeting scheduled for August, as usual. Do we have to adopt the schedule?
I guess you do.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adopting the schedule for 2018, say aye. Opposed, no. It's adopted. Agenda item number three is the report of the Executive Director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that Ms. Young just left the room, even though she has 16 more days with us. But on behalf of the staff, I'd also like to thank Deborah for her good work with the Commission. She's been a tremendous help to all of us, and on personal note, we'll miss her. So she does still have more time with us, and we look forward to the remaining days that she has at the Commission, but I think it's important for us to acknowledge the good work that Deborah has done. So thank you so much, Deborah, for being with us for 25 years. And with that, I'd also like to announce that we have another Deborah who's joining us, Deborah Dixon. She joins NCPC.
Yes.
As our Director, as our Director of the Office of Administration, she will oversee all matters pertaining to budget, finance, contracting procurement, technology, human resources, facilities management, jack-of-all-trades. So we're really pleased to have her here. She joins us from the U.S. Nuclear Waste Technical Review Board, where she served in a similar capacity. She also served as the Director of Administration for the Office of the Federal Coordinator, Alaska Natural Gas Transportation Project. So we're delighted to have you here, Deborah. We've also rolled out a beta version of our agency's newly redesigned website, includes a more modern design, easier navigation, and more interactive tools. I'd like to ask our webmaster, Steve Morgan, to come to the podium just to highlight some of these changes.
I wanted to do, okay. NCPC soft-launched its brand-new website in August. The website is the primary way the public finds information about NCPC, so it's critical that it effectively and clearly convey our work. The goals for the new website were to be mobile-friendly, displaying accurately on phones as well as desktops, more visually appealing, easy to navigate, and meet all federal requirements. The website redesign was completed in-house by the Office of Public Engagement with invaluable assistance from all of NCPC's staff to develop the content. We now have the beta version online, along with the old website. You can go to the new site from the old one simply by clicking on the preview button at the top. I'd like to highlight a few pages to show some of the key features. The simplified homepage uses sliding images to display the agency's work and upcoming events. Commission meeting information is also highlighted. All of the information for the upcoming Commission meeting, from project materials, maps, and staff reports, is provided on this page. The Planning tab includes information on initiatives, topics, and individual plans, such as this page about the comprehensive plan. These pages provide relevant, easy-to-read information, downloadable documents, and links to resources. Under the Review tab is information about submitting projects, the Commission meeting, and a major project section, such as this example from the National Air and Space Museum. We found that the major projects are some of the most searched-for items. And I'll close with this page, which provides a timeline of planning history in Washington, D.C. area, as an example of our efforts to provide information in a visual, clear manner. We're testing out the new site and actively seeking comments about the new design. At the top of every page is a button to provide public feedback. We'll switch from the old site to the new site after the October Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, you've done a wonderful job. I know it's been a long effort, and the fact that we did it all in-house is extraordinary. So it speaks to the talent that you have. So, thank you very much. Are there questions for Steve? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Steve. Agenda item number four is the legislative update, and our General Counsel has disappeared. We will skip that, we'll come back to it later. Agenda item number five is a consent calendar, and we have two items. Item 5A is for the installation of a parking lot canopy, photovoltaic panels at several sites on Joint Base Anacostia-Balting, submitted by the Department of the Navy. And item 5B is the rehabilitation and addition of Building 245, the Radiation Physics Laboratory at the National Institute of Standards and Technology in Gaithersburg, submitted by the Department of Commerce. Is there a motion on the consent calendar? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye. Opposed, no. It is adopted. We will rearrange and go to the Nebraska Avenue project first. This is Agenda item number 6B, which is the approval of preliminary site development plans for the new guard booth and fence augmentation, Department of Homeland Security's Nebraska Avenue complex. It is brought to us by General Services Administration, and Mr. Gorbich is here. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. GSA, in coordination with the Department of Homeland Security, has submitted site development plans for a new guard booth and fence augmentation at the DHS Nebraska Avenue Complex in Washington, D.C. They're seeking preliminary and final approval of the plans, though staff is recommending preliminary approval only at this time due to some outstanding concerns with the proposal, which will be further described during the presentation. So I'd like to start with providing a brief overview of the topics that will be covered today. I'll be talking through the facility location, planning history, existing site conditions, and the project proposal. The presentation will then shift to issues identified in staff analysis, and we'll conclude with the Executive Director's recommendation to the Commission. So the Nebraska Avenue Complex, or NAC, is located near the intersection of Nebraska and Massachusetts avenues in northwest D.C. The 38-acre site currently serves as the headquarters for the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and houses more than 30 buildings containing approximately 650,000 square feet. Adjacent uses include the National Presbyterian Church and School to the North, the NBC4 Studios to the northeast, Glover Archbald Park, a National Park Service property to the south and east, and American University across Ward Circle to the west. As can be seen on this map, a public recreational trail, the Massachusetts 39th Trail, runs through Glover Archbald Park immediately adjacent to the complex. The Commission has reviewed several projects and plans for NAC over the years, the most comprehensive of which was a draft master plan that was submitted for review in May 2011. The Commission commented favorably on the draft master plan for the complex at that time, which included planning goals regarding edges, access and circulation, security, and view sheds, all of which relate to the current proposal. Relevant details of the plan and Commission comments will be discussed later in the presentation, though at this point it's important to note that a final master plan has not been submitted for the complex. I'll next walk through existing conditions at the site. So NAC is almost fully enclosed by outer perimeter fencing, as well as an interior fence that secures the inner campus. The focus of this project is on the outer perimeter fencing, so I'll describe its components in more detail. The perimeter fence includes four different fence types. So the first is shown here in green, which is referred to as the Palisade Fence. The Palisade fencing is only used along Nebraska Avenue, which generally serves as the front door of the complex. It's considered the most ceremonial fence at the site and features a brick base and columns with black steel bars. The second fence type, shown here in red, is a standard black chain-link fence, which is used to enclose the vast majority of the site. It begins at the northern edge of the facility, along the driveway to NBC4 Studios, continues around to the east along Glover Archbald Park, and ends near Massachusetts Avenue at the south. The third fence type, shown here in yellow, is a tall wooden fence. It's only used on a small portion of the site to separate the complex from a historic structure that's known as the Gatesley House, which is currently administered by the Department of the Navy. And the last type of fence is shown here in blue, which is a very low wooden fence that separates the southern entry drive from a steep embankment at the western edge of the campus along Ward Circle. As can be seen on this slide, the only portion of the complex without perimeter fencing is the area shaded in orange on the map. This is a heavily wooded area with sloping terrain that separates the DHS parking lot from Massachusetts Avenue and Ward Circle to the west. The facility has four entry points, all of which are monitored by guard posts. One of these points is on Massachusetts Avenue, near the low wooden fence in blue, while the other three are on Nebraska Avenue. There's also another guard booth at the north of the site, near NBC4 Studios. The existing guard booths are shown here in dark blue, and the photo on this slide shows the furthest west booth on Nebraska Avenue and represents a typical design for the other guard booths on the complex. Because NAC serves as the headquarters for the Department of Homeland Security, a secure campus is of utmost concern to the agency, and its submission to the Commission, GSA noted that the complex has experienced recent breaches of perimeter security and that enhancements to the system are needed. This project proposal consists of three primary improvements that are intended to address ongoing security concerns. So the first of these improvements is the addition of a new guard booth, which is shown on this map in red. The new 48-square-foot security guard booth would control the raising and lowering of bollards along the interior roadway, controlling vehicular access into the central campus area. So the placement of the proposed booth is shown on this inset with the bollards along the interior drive to the south. The new booth would not be visible from any adjacent public areas. Here you can see design details and rendering of the proposed booth, which would match the style of the existing guard booths on campus. The second improvement proposed as part of this project is the installation of 453 linear feet of eight-foot-tall chain-link security fence at the southwestern edge of the campus, shown here with a dashed red line. The black chain-link fencing would match the style of the existing chain-link fence indicated with the solid red line that surrounds the facility. As shown on this site plan, the new chain-link fencing would connect the existing tall wooden fence with the low wooden fence. It would be placed between the existing parking lot and the tree line that sits adjacent to the sloping wooded terrain along Ward Circle and Massachusetts Avenue. At its proposed location, it would not be visible from Ward Circle or Nebraska Avenue, and only minimally visible from Massachusetts Avenue during months when adjacent trees have no foliage. This fencing would close the gap in the outer perimeter fencing system. The third and final proposed improvement is the installation of 12 inches of barbed wire along the existing and proposed chain-link fence areas, shown on this plan in red. The barbed wire would be placed as three strands secured to outriggers and would be black to match the existing fencing. An example of this fencing is shown in the photo to the right. The barbed wire is proposed entirely within the site boundary and would not be added to the ceremonial palisade fencing, the tall wood fence, or the low wood fencing. DHS has indicated that an area of particular concern is at the north side of the complex along the NBC4 driveway. This area is marked with a red star on the site plan to the left. Due to site topography and an adjacent handrail that's on NBC property, this section of chain-link fence, shown in the center photo, is the most vulnerable point in the current perimeter security system. The diagram to the right shows the proposed future condition, which indicates that the installation of barbed wire would reduce the threat of breach at this location. I'll next review staff analysis of the proposal. In review of the project, staff has identified two primary areas where security fencing and new barbed wire could be seen from public space adjacent to the complex. They're identified with red stars on the map. The first area of concern is the Massachusetts 39th Trail in Glover Archbald Park. This photo was taken from the trail and shows the existing black chain-link fence at the eastern side of the facility. Vegetation and steep topography, obscure views of the facility from most areas of the trail, but this photo demonstrates that pedestrians would still have a clear view of the fence, which would be amplified by the addition of barbed wire. It's also expected that the fence would be more clearly visible during months when the trees and other vegetation lack the summer foliage that's shown here. The second area of concern is at the north end of the complex, near the driveway to NBC. This photo was taken from Nebraska Avenue and shows another portion of black chain-link fence that would be augmented with barbed wire. While seasonal vegetation currently screens views, the existing fencing and proposed barbed wire would be clearly visible in colder months. Because barbed wire near Glover Archbald Park and NBC Studios could be viewed from public space, staff recommends that the Commission request that GSA add landscaping at these locations to provide screening and minimize visual impacts throughout the year. As previously noted, the Commission reviewed the draft master plan for the facility in May 2011. The Commission made several recommendations related to security, visibility, and landscaping at that time. Specifically, the Commission recommended that the applicant, one, evaluate the potential to minimize views of security from public space, allow for more options for vehicular access in the complex, and allow for consideration of community amenities at the site. Two, evaluate the potential to further increase the tree canopy at the complex. And three, develop specific landscape design guidelines and/or a concept landscaping plan for the areas of the campus viewed from public space. As noted, staff believes that visibility of security features and vegetative screening are still of concern at the complex. A finalized master plan for the facility would help provide more comprehensive guidance for future development. Accordingly, staff recommends that the Commission request that GSA submits a final master plan for the Nebraska Avenue Complex as a follow-up to the NCPC recommendations on the draft master plan reviewed in May of 2011. In conclusion, it's the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission approves the preliminary site development plans for the new guard booth and fence augmentation, requests that GSA add landscaping to the two areas of chain-link fence with barbed wire that can be viewed from public space to minimize visual impacts throughout the year. These areas include the fence at the northern edge of the complex, parallel to NBC driveway, and the fence visible from Massachusetts 39th Trail, and requests that GSA submit a final master plan for the Nebraska Avenue Complex. That concludes the staff presentation. Representatives from GSA are here today and available to answer any questions on the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Gorbich. Are there questions or comments on this?
I have a question.
His wife.
I just have to ask the question. I understand the need for security, but if the White House doesn't have barbed wire, why does this place need barbed wire? I'm serious, I don't get that, this projection of fear. I know it's a cheap solution, but I'm at a loss on this one. Sorry.
Do you want to provide an answer, or do you want to pause and defer to?
No, I'm going to ask our project manager, Casey Melton, from OPDQ, to attempt to answer these questions in the absence of a representative from DHS.
Melton, welcome.
Yes, sir, thank you. Casey Melton, planner from GSA. The reason that DHS has requested to put barbed wire on top of the fence is they were having an issue with folks climbing over the fence, getting into the visitors' parking lot, and being involved in what can be considered vandalism. So Department of Homeland Security had a lot of concerns about that, so their idea was to put up the fence and then to put the barbed wire on top of it to make it harder for anyone to be able to access the site.
And that's the best solution, I guess?
They did explore several different alternatives, one of which was putting up a more of a permanent fence in terms of something that looked like what was going on on Nebraska Avenue. They went away from that due to the sound that that would make, the money, the time. Then they thought about cameras and lights, motion sensors, but then they started thinking about being good neighbors because you do have an apartment complex to the southern side where the topography gets rather steep going down to Massachusetts Avenue. So the best alternative that they could come up with was the chain-link fence and then putting barbed wire on the top. They knew that that wasn't the best that they could do in terms of all alternatives, but that was the best that they came up with with the time that they had, ma'am.
With all due respect, if I were a neighbor, I would not want to see chain-link and barbed wire. It has impacts on property value, it projects fear, it says this is a crime-ridden area. I just would ask that you go back and rethink that neighborhood strategy. I'd be curious what the neighbors said. I'm sorry.
So this is.
Preliminary, final.
What I can add to Casey's, what he's relaying from DHS is that the main perpetrator that brought about this need to put the fence up was an AU student who was, or several, and there have been several occurrences where they're somewhat impaired, and so barbed wire is the solution to make them feel something when they're climbing the fence. There were drunk kids from AU who were climbing the fence, and this is, the barbed wire is their solution to, I guess, public drunkenness. I don't know. I mean, this is, we've had a lot of conversations about this. So it's a, it's a bit of a, I don't know, a zero-sum game because the idea is to minimize how much you can see it. Or we go to a Fullmonti, you know, two-step fence like we have at St. Elizabeth's, I mean, a no-climb combo. So then it comes down to money.
Just curious, is this an every-weekend occurrence, or any sense for the frequency of this?
I can't answer that. I mean, not I can't, I won't answer it, I don't know.
I can't imagine that the only reason they're putting them up is because one time kids went over who were drunk. I've got to believe it's a broader security perspective. It is the headquarters of a critical national.
It is the headquarters of a critical national security and location. It is a cost-effective means. They've already got chain-link everywhere other than the one place they're going to put it inside a wood line that you're not going to see. So the chain-link's already there, but it's a way to enhance it. I would assume that if they did not have chain-link, and they needed to put all the fencing up, they might go to a different type of a no-climb, but this is a very cost-effective way to take care of a no-climb. There's a lot of other types of no-climb, but they're just quite costly.
I think you're spot-on with that, sir.
Yeah, I mean, in the last six years, we've been putting it all around our perimeter as well, but we had it all open. We had nothing. So we put up a more traditional no-climb. But if we had had chain-link all around our perimeter at the Pentagon headquarters, probably would have just gone with something like that as well. It's an effective way to do it. But getting the no-climb there, I'm sure, is for much broader and larger reasons that they're trying to control some of the perimeter better.
And just to clarify for folks, I think there may have been a misprint in the agenda. It's actually, this is just preliminary, not preliminary and final. They requested preliminary and final, but staff is recommending preliminary.
Okay. It does say preliminary.
With final dependent on coming back with a design for the landscape. Is that...
Correct, yeah.
Mr. May?
Yeah, so I had a question first. You showed a plan that shows the, sort of, the totality of the perimeter. Okay, that was good. So they're proposing the link, the chain-link fencing to close that one gap, but isn't there a gap, sort of, right next to that, between the blue line and the solid red?
Yeah, but that's actually, that's a primary entrance into the facility. That's kind of the main drive. And on the eastern side, where that little gap is, there's a guard booth right there. So it's our understanding that they thought that was secure enough.
Can you indicate on the screen where the guard booth is?
Yes. It is right here.
Right there. So, and that's 24/7, there's somebody there?
Yes, yes. And so as folks are coming up Massachusetts Avenue and taking a right, so if we were going from the southeast up towards the, up towards the north, as you come around that corner, the road actually snakes around and then comes in. So as you're coming through that bottom part there, the southern part where his red dot is right there, that, there is a guard booth right there that is manned 24 hours a day.
So there's a single person there with eyes on that whole stretch of no fence?
I am not going to say it's a single person. I don't know if it's, if there's two people in that guard booth or one, but I do know that it is manned.
Okay. I mean, the reason I bring it up is that it seems like they're, you know, they're fortifying 95% of the perimeter, and then there's still this gap that's going to be relying on a single person sitting there. It just seems kind of odd to me. And the rest of this fence, where it's a solid red line, all that existing fence is at eight feet right now?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and on Nebraska Avenue, the total height of that fence?
I'm not sure about the height of the palisade fence.
I'll get back to you on that, sir.
Okay. Because, I mean, it does have the, you know, sort of, the iron bars tilting outward, which is not a very attractive thing. I don't know when we ever approved that. Hopefully, it wasn't when I was around. Because that just, you know, that's a really, talk about projecting fear. I mean, I think that's pretty unattractive with the bars bent like that. I assume that's all solid bar and not the cheap, you know, hollow metal?
No, it's solid bar. The one thing that I will say, sir, is on the Nebraska Avenue side, from that fence to the actual buildings is a very, very short distance. So I think that that fence is fortified for that reason, and it's made like that to be a little bit more...
That's water under the bridge for my concern. I'm just commenting that that's, you know, that's ugly and projects fear. I did have the question about breaches. I'd actually like to know more about the breaches before we take action next time around to understand whether, in fact, it is just a handful of drunken student incidences or whether there are, you know, there's deliberate crime going on where people are going in and, because I'm sure this is a 24/7 facility. If they're going into the parking lot, there're going to be cars there all the time. And, you know, if that's a real problem, I mean, I think I can understand that.
We did ask DHS to come to give the security rationale, and we were unable to bring that about.
Yeah. Well, it just seems, I mean, this is not exactly a high-crime neighborhood, so I don't know, you know, if there're going to be lots of open parking lots that are not attended, so I don't know why anybody would be, you know, working really hard and climbing eight-foot fences to get to parking lots that are, you know, I don't know, ripe for some sort of criminal activity when, in fact, there are numerous apartment buildings and things like that around there that probably have parking lots and cars just sitting there. So the last question I have is, why has it been six years since we had the draft master plan? Why didn't we ever see a final?
We stopped working on the master plan several years ago, and there is movement afoot to resuscitate the master plan.
All right, so that doesn't tell, it tells us what happened, but not necessarily why. But it seems to me that it would have been good to have finished that, and it would give us better guidance at this moment.
It would be very good to finish it. I do think that some of the delay, now, I'm... Some of the delay could possibly be to coordinate the master plan, what's happening at the NAC, with what's happening at St. Elizabeth's. And because St. Elizabeth's has been in such flux, it's kind of hard to plan responsibly at the NAC. Because we're not even sure who's going to stay or go, and so we're hoping that the next few months gives us some clarity on both situations.
Okay. Reasonable, I understand why, I mean, that. St. Elizabeth's has been in flux. So then my last question is, in order to get answers to some of these questions about the rationale for the fence and, I don't know what else we need, what else we raised, but, and, oh, and, you know, whether DHS is agreeing to do the screening. I mean, I guess we'll find that out when we consider it for final, but I guess my, I'm rambling. The question is, do we need to add something to the EDR to request that DHS provide further information explaining the rationale for the fence? Does that make, is that something that the commission staff needs from us, or will you be able to find that information out without us putting it into the EDR?
I mean, we haven't, I, on NCPC staff, we haven't worked directly with DHS staff. We've been working mostly through GSA. So I think the question is probably to you guys, if you think you can get that information without the commission saying something formally about it.
I can press for that, I can press for that and have those answers back to you, sir.
So it's really, I mean, we can, we can get the information in writing?
If you believe you can get it without us putting it into the EDR, just assume not mess with the EDR.
I would just assume not mess with the EDR also. So we will, we will do our very best to get it in writing and distribute it to the commission.
Well, and it would be great to have somebody here next time.
Yes, it would.
I appreciate how you tried to do that and it didn't work out. But maybe someone at DHS will pay attention to what we're saying now and will, that will add to your requests.
I'm sure Mr. Gerbich, on behalf of the commission, can put in writing to the GSA, which they can pass along, noting our, the depth of our questions and concerns, and request that someone be here in October.
Absolutely. Happy to work with GSA to make that happen, so.
Mr. Shaw?
I was just wondering if there was any guidance in the federal element of the comprehensive plan around urban design that could just either inform or justify, you know what I mean? So we've had some hierarchies. We have some policies. If this conforms with our policies for these areas, you know, then it'd just be helpful to hear the explanation through the narrative of our planning processes if there's not a master plan here. Because by default, that sort of is the guiding document. And then just, I mean, I think as a representative of the mayor, I know this is a very engaged community as it comes to planning and design, just that, and our idea of shared stewardship, that if, I'm not saying go get an ANC resolution or anything like that, but just, it may bite all of us later on if there hasn't been some awareness on the part of the surrounding community just around these proposed changes. So it's just trying to get a sense of the, of the community or a sense of concerns that may have been raised around, for example, what AU and other places, that may signal something, so.
And I can provide a little bit of clarification, I think, to the first point regarding the policies. I mean, the policies really kind of dictating security barriers and that kind of thing relate to kind of making sure it's integrated in the urban landscape and visual, or minimizing visual impact and infringement into public space. So those are kind of the primary concerns, as well as enhancement of streetscape. And I know that, again, based on some commission comments thus far, it sounds like folks have some concerns with that, so.
Just real quick, so I would just, once again, even in the recommendation that you referenced it back into the plan a little bit tighter, just because it, sometimes it sounds like, hey, that's sort of pretty, that's ugly, and we can't, we can see it from the trail, but if it really is some guidance that's come from the, from the urban design element, the federal comp plan, that just gives a little bit more heft, at least, in how we talk about it.
Ms. White?
I just want to echo those comments. I think that's a really smart way to go about it. And to be clear, I appreciate and understand the concern for security and safety, but not necessarily convinced this is the best solution, especially when somebody with wire cutters doesn't have to climb over the fence and can do that pretty quickly. So I'm just, I just would love to hear more, to be convinced, and also, as we have encouraged other applicants to work with the community, I'd love to know if that's been done and how.
We'll continue to work with folks to make sure we get that information.
Yes, sir.
Hi. Can you go to page 26, slide 26? I just had a clarification question about the reference to community amenities. Trying to understand that. Oh, maybe it was right before, here we go. What is, in that first bullet, allow for the consideration of community amenities. What does that mean?
So I think this was related to just kind of being a good neighbor. At that time, it was, you know, understanding it's a high-security facility, but trying to figure out ways to kind of integrate into the community better, I think, was the idea behind that, without having it directly in front of me, but...
Okay. It seems like an odd comment for a closed, highly-secure facility.
Level five, yeah. I was going to say that, too. That's kind of a tall order for a level five. Because you can't really maintain any level of, is porosity a word? You know, I mean, it's not like you can say, y'all come in for, you know, and check out our chapel. It's hard to do. I don't, I was going, I'm glad you asked. Because I'm going to, we're going to need to explain some of this, so I'm not sure. If you could give us examples, not now, but later, of what you are looking for, then we could at least have the conversation.
And also to clarify, this was from the May 2011 review of the master plan, not something that's been recommended now. And accompanying this was actually, and accompanying this actually was a suggestion to look at ways to potentially reduce the security level of the site, which we've found out since then is not something feasible for the site. So it's kind of within the context of that original plan, not this review.
Mr. Cash?
So a question, I don't know if I misheard this or if it was implied, but so this is the perimeter fence on the outside. Is there any internal fences around the actual buildings themselves separating them from the parking lots, or is it just a single fence around the outside?
So we didn't get a lot of specifics on the actual kind of interior versus exterior, but I do know that there is, at least on the southern portion, an interior fence. And I believe kind of looking at some of the shots that we did get from the submission and things that we have seen in, like, previous master plans, that there are kind of a couple layers, but I don't know specifically kind of which sites are covered where. So that is probably something we...
And I think that just raises a further question, because if the concern here is really security, and it turns out that this is securing a few cars in the parking lot, not actually the national security assets, I think that kind of changes the opinion of how much we should allow, something that's really ugly and possibly inconsistent, to move forward. So I think that's just another reason why it would be good to have DHS here to be able to answer some of these questions. And I'll just kind of add for the record, I mean, I'm a member of a deliberative legislative body that often gets stonewalled by an executive sometimes that doesn't want to give us information, and I would just kind of add, this is coming before us maybe one more time, and even if it's not because necessarily the substance, or we understand if we're not getting answers to the questions, I don't see why there's any reason not to withhold until we can get those answers. So I'd just kind of throw that out there from a strategy perspective, because I think it's a slippery slope if we have legitimate questions and an agency's not willing to come down here to help us understand that before we make an informed judgment. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Mr. Gerbich has made note of that. Other questions or comments? Realizing that this is preliminary site development plan, and they'll be coming back before us, is there a begrudging motion to approve the EDR? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR as written, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
One no. Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Shall we go to South, the Smithsonian? Yep, okay. We have, we're still going to delay one item. We're going to go to the information presentation on the South Mall campus plan, Smithsonian. And again, Mr. Gerbich, thank you for your hospitality this morning. It was very informative.
You're very welcome.
So we have Mr. Fliss first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you mentioned, the Smithsonian Institution is here today to provide an overview of the proposed South Mall campus master plan. I'll provide just a brief introduction and then turn it over to Ms. Ann Trobridge, who is Associate Director for Planning with the Smithsonian, who will go through the remainder of the presentation. Just in terms of background, the project area is located along the south side of the National Mall. It's highlighted here in yellow, immediately north of Independence Avenue. The site is a combination of important historic and cultural facilities, which form the centerpiece of the Smithsonian Institution on approximately 17 acres. The campus is also within the National Mall Historic District. This is the existing site plan for the campus. Independence Avenue is located on the south with the National Mall located on the north side. Many of you were able to join the tour today, but just as a recap, and for the audience, I'm going to walk you through the existing site and facilities just to provide some context. First, of course, we have the Smithsonian Castle, which is the centerpiece of the campus, and this building is a national historic landmark, currently home to a visitor center and administrative offices. On the west side of the campus, we have the Freedom Gallery, which houses one of the premier collections of Asian art. Towards the center of the campus, we have the Arts and Industry Building, which is also a national historic landmark. It was also the first United States National Museum. On the west side of the campus, we have the Hirshhorn Museum and the Sculpture Garden. This was recently found to be individually eligible for the Historic Register, and it's home to a collection of modern art and works by emerging artists. At the center of the campus is the Quadrangle and Hop Gardens. This is a three-story underground complex, including museum, auditorium, and office space. The roof is occupied by the Hop Garden, which is about four acres in size, and this, of course, provides the setting from the castle as seen from the south. In the Hop Garden, we have the Sackler Gallery and National Museum of African Art pavilions. These were recently not found to be individually eligible for the Historic Register, but they do contribute to the National Mall Historic District. And you can see those are highlighted in yellow. And then finally, we have several other structures and gardens, including the Ripley Center, the Folger Rose Garden, the Ripley Garden, which is located between the Hirshhorn and the Arts and Industries Building. Just quickly moving on to process, currently, as you know, an EIS is being developed to evaluate the potential impacts from implementing the master plan. The plan, of course, intends to guide future development in the campus over the next 20 or so years. NCPC is the lead federal agency for NEPA compliance, and in this case, Smithsonian works with NCPC where the individual projects within the master plan require your approval. The EIS will provide a full analysis and discussion of the potential impacts resulting from implementation. Smithsonian has also initiated the Section 106 process. Smithsonian has also initiated the Section 106 process and held several meetings with consulting parties to discuss the significant number of historic resources within the campus. To date, comments have focused on a number of areas, including the proposed program, seismic protection, the future use of the Arts and Industries Building, as well as comments regarding the gardens, as well as the potential impacts to the pavilions. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anne Trebridge with the Smithsonian, who will go through the remainder of the presentation.
Matt, should I come over there, because there isn't a slide change?
Sure.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bryant and members of the Commission, and thank you very much for coming over this morning for a tour. Any of you who missed that, we'd be happy through Julia Koster to set up another rain date for you if you'd like. We are here today at the Commission's request to provide an update on, on the master plan. As Matt said, we're in the process, deep in the public process with our EIS scheduled to be released to the public later this fall. Our expectation is that we'll be back for review of the draft and final master plans late winter and next spring. We're hoping by this time next year, we will have a, an approved master plan and be able to proceed with the projects associated with the castle. My presentation today will be a quick update for those who missed our April 2016 presentation on goals and objectives and the first four alternatives that had been developed. And then to spend some time introducing new alternative F that responds to comments we've heard from the public as well as internal discussions and work with our master plan architect team led by the B R K English Group. First, the needs to be addressed by the master plan. First and foremost, renovate and restore our historic buildings, especially the castle, the Hirshhorn, to replace mechanical systems and roofs that are at the end of their life. The quadrangle roof must be removed and the garden above removed so that that membrane can be completely replaced. We'd like to replace these mechanical systems with a much more efficient energy system. We, we think we can reduce our energy use by about a third and our greenhouse gas emissions similarly, as well as lower our costs by approximately 50%. And when our, when your utility bills are in the million-dollar range, that's a significant savings that many of our alternatives will accomplish. We'd also like to improve circulation clarity and access for people with disabilities. Our buildings currently all meet legal ADA accessibility, but there are several places, notably the Freer Gallery, where on the Independence Avenue, accessible entrance requires you to ask the guard to let you into a service door and onto a service lift from the sidewalk up to the main gallery level. We'd like to have a direct, more easily accessible entrance for Freer Gallery. We'd like to improve the accessibility of the Hirshhorn and the castle as well. We'd also like to create paths east and west through our campus, which do not exist now, largely because the Hirshhorn is cut, cut off by its walls from the Arts and Industries Building, which in turn cannot be accessed by the public in this access until we get rid of the parking lot that's on the other side of that wall in the Ripley Garden. We'd also like to connect better to the Southwest Eco District, which we see as a much more lively neighborhood in the future. The redevelopment of the Energy Department site will open up 10th Street to our campus and we'd like to welcome that and be sort of the anchor to that future exciting neighborhood. We'd like to improve the visibility of the Sackler and African Art entrances from the mall as well as from the castle. Currently, they are face inward and are difficult to see from the mall where more than half of our visitors come to the Smithsonian, particularly with the location, the Smithsonian Metro north of the Freer Gallery. We'd also like to expand and link our visitor and education spaces. That was one of the strongest messages we had from our constituents at the Smithsonian. These two groups, in fact, merged their committee for the project because they want those spaces to connect and be flexible. Right now, the education spaces are at the lowest level of the Quadrangle Building, reached by the small round pavilion out near the Freer, and have no public connection to the castle visitor spaces. In, in our alternatives, we create the ability to link those and have both the restored grade hall, the upper grade hall, Ripley Education Center, visitor and amenities, and then additional assembly space all linked together. We'd also like to expand and improve underground loading. Some of you visited our Sackler loading dock this morning. You could see how crowded that is. We'd like to be able to do away with the at-grade parking and loading east of the AIB building and consolidate into a single loading reachable, will be located beneath the west end of the castle and in front of the Freer, and also connect to AIB Sackler, the African Art, the castle, and if feasible in the future, could be extended under the Knights Street Tunnel to connect to the Hirshhorn. We also want to provide permanent, improve perimeter security for this part of our campus as part of each project that is implemented. Here is a summary of the alternatives. The not assessed alternatives being alternative C, which was not maintained because it, it really, its differences with alternative D were better exemplified in alternative F. And alternative E, which was an attempt to merge some of the character of the existing gardens with some of the slope plane qualities of alternative D. It was a bit dead on arrival and had little support among our consulting parties or our Smithsonian gardens. We're not thrilled with it either. So we, we have dismissed alternative E and won't really present that here. Alternative F, we believe, offers many potential improvements to alternative D, which was the master plan presented to the public, and we'll be talking about that in a little bit more detail later. First of all, just to summarize what is common to all, in every case, the castle will be brought up to code for seismic reinforcement, probably by a combination of base isolation and some bracing. We're undertaking some studies right now, over the next year or so, that will help us determine that. We're making a BIM model of the entire castle and really starting that, that investigation. We'd also like to, in, in every one of our alternatives, we create an accessible entrance to the Freer by extending a window on the east side to grade that leads to some staff space below the gallery level of the Freer, so you would circulate into a hallway and there's an elevator there that would bring you up into the gallery. So it, it is done without impacting galleries or central court of the Freer. We also, in all alternatives, need to lower the basement floor of the castle, which many of you saw for yourself this morning. It's inadequate, doesn't make, meet code, and we'd like to put the utilities underground so that you can appreciate some of the vaulting of that castle's ceiling. We would be restoring the upper areas of the castle in all of our alternatives, including moving offices out of what was once the upper grade hall to consolidated office space off the campus so that that can be returned to public use. Similarly, we will be renovating, doing renovations in the Hirshhorn building and repairing the perimeter walls, which are one of the more pressing needs there. We would also replace the quadrangle roof membrane and provide perimeter security. Alternative A, to summarize, was one of the alternatives we were asked to explore by the D.C. Historic Preservation Office. This alternative leaves all three of the quadrangle pavilions and leaves that building more or less intact as it is now, with its roof replaced, but the garden put back essentially as it is now, I'm sure with a few improvements. But that alternative would hardly be visible, but it also would fall very much short of meeting our purpose and need. For that reason, we are proposing that it be not further analyzed in the EIS. Alternative B preserves the two pavilions of the quadrangle to the south. It removes the Ripley Pavilion in order to make way for the underground loading near the castle and Freer. And this one meets some of our needs, but falls short primarily in getting the entryways closer to the mall and connecting them better to the castle and integrating our education and visitor services spaces, which we explained on the tour were important to our internal constituents to accomplish. We, this, this alternative, since we saw you last, was modified at the suggestion of the D.C. ship out to include the central mechanical plant located on three underground levels to the east of the quad and west of the AIB building. Alternative D is the previous version presented to the public of the master plan. It, many of you are familiar with it. It had a few shortcomings that we heard much about in the consultations as part of the Section 106 process, significantly the amount of excavation below the castle, the dislike for the sloping of the ground plane towards a lowered castle entrance. It was thought that the garden didn't create intimate enough spaces, which was partly a feature of rendering, but also perhaps design. And, and also the desire not to remove the renwick gates, as was illustrated in that Alternative F attempts to address many of these, those concerns of alternative D while maintaining its ability to meet our purpose and need quite well. And in fact, I think our architectural team is very, very happy with this alternative and views it as an improvement over D. So the public process has led to good results, we believe. As I said, this addresses three concerns with, with alternative D that had been our preference. It limits the extent of excavation. It leaves the historic setting of the castle at grade, and it strives to maintain the character of the gardens by retaining the parterre and the gates and other features. Here is the existing conditions. This restores the castle, as in the other alternatives. It consolidates the loading below grade. It builds a underground connection between the castle and the quad that allows this visitor and education spaces to connect. Rather than being at three levels below grade in the quad, they are now brought up to one level below grade. We also build the central mechanical plant on the west side of AIB. Here, you can see the extent of excavation. We provide access to the museum visitor center in this alternative via two stairways located at the north edge of the quadrangle and going down to a level a little bit higher than the existing Quad B1 level, but lower than the current castle basement. From there, one would enter into that amenity area in, to the south, immediate south of the castle. The entrance pavilions for the two museums would be moved closer to the mall and connected to the castle underground space. We would expand the amount of daylight entering the underground spaces through skylights adjacent to the castle in areas that are currently, in many cases, areaways, as well as a perimeter skylight that also serves to orient visitors to the building above. We would have museum access as well as castle access concentrated in this new south entrance. And we would have east-west as well as north-south connections across campus. The parterre is preserved as a forecourt to the castle. We provide intimate gardens within the Hopp Garden. We provide some teaching gardens, which I think we ran into Barbara Faust, who is about to lead a class this morning in the gardens. We also link to the Southwest Eco District and provide the connection to the mall for those two museums. That is their primary goal. We have better access and daylight. And as shown here, a comparison of alternative D and F, both provide improved daylight to underground spaces. Here, you can see the view from underneath in the gallery areas. Our, our goal for the gardens has always been to, to draw inspiration from the Andrew Jackson Downing Plan for what was once the Smithsonian pleasure grounds, a much more naturalistic design that extended out north into the mall, to combine that with the current design of the Hopp Garden and in a garden that embodies all of these characters and is a contrast to the National Mall in its intimacy and its horticultural diversity, display of art, and intimate setting. Here is a diagram of the major pathways we'd like to have through that garden, the kinds of spaces we wish to create. Elaborated a little more, we propose to preserve a parterre at the center, to, to introduce some teaching gardens, to continue the tradition of intimate gardens, and to have a landscape and to have a landscape area between the skylight and Independence Avenue that incorporates perimeter security in a well-disguised manner. We will maintain the informal gathering outside the buildings. Here, we're showing a suggested area near AIB. And just this series of slides will show you sort of layering up from the castle back to Independence Mall what the character of the garden will be. There's the trees in the Mall, the trees nearest the castle, the new entry pavilions, and more trees and the perimeter. So ending with a view from the Southwest Eco District with the Remwick Gates maintained. This view shows the intimate character of the garden outside the Freer Gallery, looking east towards AIB with the castle to your left and the entry pavilion to the Sackler would be to the left as well. This view is outside the castle, looking towards the monument with the Ripley Pavilion removed. One will have a better view there of the monument from the gardens. And the stairways down to the new entry would be over to your left in this view. Thank you very much. If you have questions, I'd love to answer them.
Other questions or comments from Ms. Trobridge on this extraordinary project? And remind me, when ideally would you like to have the construction start?
Well, when can we afford it?
Yeah.
I think it really is a matter of balancing the need to fund and build the Air and Space Project, which starts next summer, and fund and design the castle renovation and its associated projects as soon as we can. We're already beginning the studies that will lead to its design. We are beginning, we are working on the real estate deals that will relocate the offices. So we're doing some of the preparatory work, but I think we do not yet have the funds identified for the castle to start in a...
Sure.
For sure. But I would say 2022, maybe? It's a long project to design.
Sure. Is there a design team already on board?
We are currently working with B.R.K. Ingalls Group. I think there will be some expansion of that design team, some changes probably, but we're not at that point yet.
Sure, understood. Other questions or comments?
Sure.
Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, I had some questions about the Ripley removals. I know that the garden was for Livingston Ripley, I think.
Mary Livingston Ripley, yes, that Ripley garden.
Yeah, but the other pavilion was Dylan Ripley's pavilion, correct?
Yeah, the entry pavilion to the Education Center is named for former Secretary Dylan Ripley.
I know he's not with us now, but he was a good friend of mine. And I want to be sure he's not forgotten in the new work. Is he going to be replaced, or is it going to be a clean house?
I think that's to be determined by, probably by our development office. But I think he was responsible for bringing these museums and the International Center to this location, and that will all stay in the master plan. So I think his legacy will remain in the institutions he created, if not in the specific entry to the Education Center.
I just want to speak up for him, that's all. And also, you know, he always, he says something to me after one of his travels internationally. And he told me that people in other countries, I think he said in China, but other countries, said that Americans were beginning to replace manners with friendship. And I thought it kind of an interesting comment. But when you watch the current situation, everybody's your friend. We love you, love you so much. But how are you treating me mannerly and respectfully based upon our roles and our relationships? So I thought it was a very thoughtful comment, that he would note that in his travels. So FYI, thank you.
You never traveled to Washington.
Well, that's what he's saying, manners replacing.
Mr. Shaw, then Mr. Gallas.
Just thank you very much for a wonderful presentation and this thinking. I just wanted to highlight right now, I'm very happy around the south orientation. And I think that we have enough time in this planning to sort of think about some other projects, like World War I, where significant growth is happening at the wharf. This is going to probably one of the only free facilities, one of the beautiful, very beautiful, one of the oldest facilities, that I just think that you need to be thinking early on about a far larger volume of people being here. And that, once again, it may be a very different use than a tourist with pictures clicking. It may be a respite for residents who want a picnic or a park. I mean, I'm not going to call it a clash, but there's going to be a lot more intersectionality 10, 15 years from now with workers, residents, and tourists. And so as we think about this, if there's any way to understand, a true understanding of volume, we're more than happy to share with you our potential growth projections as it relates to this, just on the resident side.
That would be really helpful. I think from our visitor services standpoint, we currently welcome approximately 1 million people a year to the castle. And our plan is to be able to double that and welcome 2 million people to the Castle Visitor Center.
And then I just want to add one more thing, is that we're completing a cultural plan for the district right now. It still has not been released. But one of the larger pieces is around the idea of ownership of district assets. And this is a federal asset, and the fact that it's managed by the federal, but there really is an amenity that no other resident in the country or the world gets to have. And we're trying to figure out opportunities for either shared programming or a lifting of the appreciation of this as an asset for residents. So that may, we'll be sure to share that language with you as we go forward.
Yeah, I think we are proposing to set up a meeting to discuss that with our staff and yours in the future. I think we said after Labor Day.
Yeah, no, I'm with you on that, too. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you again for the wonderful and informative tour today. I think seeing is believing in a lot of ways, and it really helped us understand the complexity of that. And also, we were kept from bumping our heads on some of those lower...
You have a tall commission.
Yeah. Fascinating. I have to say that the moving of the pavilions was a little bit of something I missed in the tour this morning. Not that I think they're so great where they are, to be honest with you, but is that so that people coming off the Mall, there'll be more sort of connectivity to that and closer to the castle at the same time? So it feels more like an ensemble than sort of these separated?
Yes, that is definitely part of it. I think the two museums want better visibility from the Mall and the castle. And by moving their entry pavilions towards the castle, the entrances, they have individual entrances that have that visibility. Plus, at the one level below the entry pavilion, the entry pavilion will be smaller than the current pavilions and would be, in alternative F, really limited to just the elevator core, the security bag check, whatever, and the stair escalator down. And then at that first level below grade, they would also connect back to the visitor amenities at the Castle Visitor Center so that they would be visible both above grade and to those going to the restaurant or the auditorium or the visitor information, the restrooms, all those things that will likely be at that first below-grade level, the classrooms. So they will have greater visibility above and below grade.
So is that, in this picture, where we see the kind of raised angular kind of green roof thing, is that where that entry would be, say, for the Sackler?
Yes, that would be the Sackler. And we have been showing these as a green roof raised to become the entrance. Those entry pavilions could take many different architectural forms. And I expect you'll see sometime 10 years from now, or five to 10 years from now, different options for what that might be. The key thing is that they're minimal, they're smaller than the existing ones, and primarily to just get you in and down.
Okay. My second comment may not even be about the purview of this commission, but when we went through the African Art Museum, and you pointed out that the sort of employee level was, I think you called it B2?
Yes.
And then circulation across the two museums was really a B3. And I love the notion of everything coming up higher as it relates to what the public would see. And so it seems unusual that the employee-staff level would be in between where you'd want public circulation to be and where you'd have employees that might... If those two were flipped, it would be an interesting question. I know it's not part of your plan, but...
Well, we want to work with the existing floor levels of the quadrangle building. And that middle floor is a shorter, much shorter floor level, so it lends itself better to offices. I do think that in the shifting around of the quadrangle uses, there will be more gallery space at the lowest level as we bring the education spaces up and over towards the castle and have more of the shared assembly spaces at the first level below grade. So I think that the preponderance of gallery space for the museums will shift a little bit lower. We have to keep a first-floor, below-grade gallery-public connection from the Sackler over to the Freer Gallery, because that does not go down deeply into, you know, the lowest level. So that's where we make the connection there. We're going to have a much better connection than currently exists.
And then my last comment had to do with, I took note of a comment about improving perimeter security. We just had a presentation about the Nebraska Avenue facility. And, you know, I think that one of the challenges that you've been trying to address, it would seem, is how to make this more... What was your word, porosity? Improved porosity and connectivity.
The word now.
That's right. That's good. And so I just was struck by what you might have meant by improving perimeter security and where I was thinking maybe we'd be trying to make it more open.
Well, right now, we do have a fence around the Hough Garden for, partly because sometimes people come in and pilch the plants, especially the rare ones in some of our gardens. And it is helpful to be able to close that off when there's no one there to remind people it's not a dog-walking area and that sort of thing. But so we probably will likely need to maintain that. But the buildings do most of the enclosure of that garden. Right now, we have perimeter security. I think if you've looked at the Independence side of the Hirshhorn, you can see some big planters. They're nicely planted, but they aren't the permanent solution that at one point the Hirshhorn was thinking of having artists design perimeter security. I don't know if they're still contemplating that. Their director has changed. But the planters that are there meet all the requirements, but they were viewed at the time as the permanent version. And of course, we need more security for the castle.
Well, obviously, there's a fine line, and I don't need to tell you this, but since you mentioned the Independence Avenue side, it seems as a less-than-successful connection between the gardens and that entrance and that whole frontage along Independence Avenue. So to the extent that could be improved in terms of its porosity, I would be for that. I would look forward to seeing what you might do there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Trobridge? Thank you very much, Anne.
Thank you.
We still have one item on the action agenda for which there's an amendment being prepared still, so...
I think we should proceed with the next presentation.
Yeah, so we will continue on with the next information presentation. But after that, we hope to come back to the action item, which will require a vote. Let me see. Next item on the agenda is a presentation on joint study of the Metropolitan Washington D.C. Coastal Risk Storm Management Study. We have Mr. Bernard.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm going to provide a little background before I turn it over to Mr. Steve Wallace from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. He'll talk to you today about the particulars of the Coastal Storm Risk Management Study. Since his presentation is on the subject of flooding in the region, I will spend a few minutes on some relevant background on three particular aspects. First, some information on the region's flood risk. Second, a little bit about NCPC's flood-related efforts. And then, thirdly, a brief description about the North Atlantic Coast Comprehensive Study, which is the precursor to the study we'll hear about today. So first, I'll take the opportunity to refresh the Commission's memory on the three types of flooding that Washington, D.C. is vulnerable to. This is a subject that's actually particularly timely, given the recent devastation of Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Irma that is closing in on the United States. So the first type of flooding that the city is vulnerable to is what we call river flooding. And that's where heavy rain or snow melt in the 14,000-square-mile Potomac River watershed can cause flooding hours or days later downstream here in Washington, D.C. And probably the most notable flood of this type was the Great Flood of 1936. And this flood actually helped Congress, helped spur Congress to pass the Flood Control Act of the same year, which authorized levee systems to be constructed in the Washington, D.C. area as well as other cities and towns throughout the United States. Despite all the protections the city still experiences, river flooding today, and in this case, heavy rains and snow melt from the upper watershed caused flooding in the Georgetown area in 2010. So the second type of flooding is known as tidal or storm surge flooding. And this is a result of the Potomac River's connection to the Chesapeake Bay and ultimately to the Atlantic Ocean. Even though we're seemingly pretty far from the ocean here, both Potomac River and the Anacostia River are tidal. And in fact, the difference between high and low tide here is about three feet. So flooding, storm surge flooding occurs when there's a tropical storm or hurricane that pushes water up the Potomac River and into the city. And this is one photo of storm surge flooding from Hurricane Isabel in 2003. This photo is actually taken before high tides, so the bridge deck, so the water actually got even closer to the bridge deck at this time. So the third type of flooding is what we call interior flooding, also known as stormwater flooding. And this occurs when local heavy rains overwhelm the stormwater system and causing water to pond back on the streets. In this case, local topography also plays a role, like in Federal Triangle where Constitution Avenue is one of the lowest points in the city. And as a result, stormwater tends to funnel towards that area during heavy rains. And in fact, that's exactly what happened in 2006. Here's a photo of what those floods look like inundating Federal Triangle. And I want to point out that here... And I want to point out that here, at this time of the flood, the water surface elevation on both Potomac and Anacostia Rivers were normal, so the water that you see here is simply a result of the overwhelming amount of rain. So with that as a quick overview of the region's flood risk, I did want to spend a moment talking about NCPC's flood-related efforts. Outside of plan review and notable projects that the Commission has reviewed, including the 17th Street levee closure, NCPC has also been involved with the research and study of a variety of flooding issues over the past decade. This includes a number of studies on flooding in the federal triangle and recent work that focused on updating the flooding sections of the submission guidelines. NCPC has also been involved in a number of other projects through its participation with the DC Silver Jackets. The Silver Jackets are an inter-agency team that are focused on reducing flood risk specifically in the District of Columbia. It is co-chaired by the District Department of Energy and Environment, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the National Park Service. There are four meetings a year, but that understates the amount of communication that happens on a weekly basis between the members, who trade information on things like data to map interior flooding and coordinated responses to press inquiries. So I'm bringing up the Silver Jackets here because they are one way that stakeholders, both federal and otherwise, will be engaged in the study that you'll hear about from Mr. Walls. Okay, now lastly, before I turn it over, I'll give a little background on the North Atlantic Coast Comprehensive Study, often referred to as NACs. In the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy, Congress passed the Disaster Relief Appropriations Act of 2013, and as part of that law, Congress tasked the Army Corps of Engineers to conduct a study of the coastal areas affected by Hurricane Sandy and to evaluate flood risks from future coastal storms. I want to point out here that the focus of the study was on coastal storms specifically and not on interior or riverine flooding. So the result of this study was a very large report and a lot of data published in early 2015. The data produced for the NACs study is actually a huge part of the products, as it modeled over 1,000 potential storm tracks seen in the image on the right. With these storm tracks, they calculated storm surge and wave heights for approximately 20,000 different locations along the coast, and this data that was generated from these models served as the basis for the report and its findings, and is still useful for communities today through a publicly available database. The full NACs report included an appendix for every state in the study area. The state-by-state analysis used the models described in the previous slide to show flood extents for potential coastal storms. So an image of that from the DC appendix is on the left. The state-by-state analysis also overlaid social infrastructure and cultural resource vulnerability onto the flood extents to come up with a composite exposure index, which is shown on the right. And this was all done at a very high level, as you can tell by the coarseness of the data in these maps. Based on these and other high-level analyses, the report identifies six areas of concern for Washington DC and also offered a preliminary assessment of various shoreline strategies for the city. And I'd like to point out that a lot of the vulnerable areas that you see here on the maps are actually on federally-owned land, which is one of the primary reasons we felt it was important to inform the Commission of this study. As part of the study's authorization, the Corps was also tasked with identifying areas that warranted additional analysis that would take the study beyond just the high-level analyses that you saw on the previous slide. The final NACs report identified nine high-risk areas, which are shown here in red, and you 'll notice that one of the nine is, in fact, Washington DC. And that brings us up to today, and the presentation you're about to hear will describe the beginnings of the follow-on study for the Washington DC area. Presenting today, we have Steve Walls, the Director of Environmental Programs for the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. And then also in attendance today, we have Dan Beerly from the Army Corps of Engineers, and he will be available to answer any questions after the presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome my longtime friend and colleague, Steve Walls. We've known each other for 15 or more years. We both served in Governor Kane's administration and worked together exceedingly closely for four years. It's a Richmond's loss is the Metropolitan Washington area's gain. He's also one of the smartest people I know. So it's now your turn to say something nice about him.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It has been a pleasure to know you and to work with you closely, and I'm very glad to be here, and hello to the members of the Commission also. And I'm very glad to be working in the National Capitol Region here on these and other issues affecting the environment across the area. Nick laid out some of the flooding history and some of the work that the NACs had looked at after Hurricane Sandy, in particular, identifying us as one of the nine areas that needs further analysis. Part of what I'll also talk to you today is about NCPC's role, so Nick didn't have to talk about his own organization himself. We think that it is critically important, as Nick said, because of the level of federal impact of potential flooding, that NCPC and the federal entities be involved, as well as the states and the local entities and others. So today, I will just give, again, a little more background, look at the objectives of the study, the status, some timelines, and some next steps. Besides Daniel Burley, who is, again, the chief of the Civil Projects Development Branch at the Corps' Baltimore office, we also have Tanya Spano at COG, our Chief of Regional Water Quality Management, who is our staff lead on this particular project, and so she can also be here to answer any questions that I can't answer. They get the hard ones. The study, as Nick said, does come out of the NACs and was one of these nine focus areas. The Corps, again, has their legal authority to do that, and if somebody wants to dig into all of the data that Nick was showing, there is the URL for the particular study. The Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments is serving as the non-federal sponsor of this study, so as such, we are providing our technical expertise in water, and energy, and planning, and transportation, and in other areas, and are coordinating with the Corps, with all of the localities that are affected, with the states, with DCA Airport, with the NCPC and other federal entities. And then we are also responsible for coming up with the cost share. This is a $3 million, three-year study, of which 50% is cost share and 50% has been appropriated to the Corps for the work. NCPC does represent the substantial federal property ownership in the area and is a critical partner on this. We are very pleased with their very early involvement as we've been developing the scope of this, and they also will be, you will be involved in any types of recommendations for projects that the Corps or others could do that could come out of the study. So the scoping is important all the way through the end of the study. And we will rely on them heavily to do the coordination and communicating with and getting materials from all of the federal agencies and federal landowners in the region as we move ahead. Objectives of the study, kind of, is the big picture is that we want to create a new integrated coastal flooding model that integrates all of the flooding risks that Nick had pointed out here. There's the storm surge, there's the riverine flooding, there's the kind of the rain, overland flows, and then as there's the groundwater impacts, too. Nobody has ever put these all together in one dynamic model that will be able to look at the effects of storms and look at how that they will then result in flooding in the region and impacting all of these different approaches. Right now, we look at one or the other, we kind of do as best we can to put them together, but this will be an integrated model. This also will be looking into the future. Much of the work that we've done so far, we've looked at, for example, FEMA maps that really just look backwards. This will be looking into the future, looking at the potential effects of the change of the climate that we're seeing, whether we will have more intense storms, whether or not we'll see more storm surges. And then there are other effects that climate change will have that will affect the ability of the land to take the rainfall. So it is looking forward and not just looking back, as we have historically done. We will be IDing the critical infrastructure that will be at risk and many of the dependencies of the infrastructure. So while we'll be focusing in on just particularly the tidal areas, it'll have use beyond the tidal areas as we look at the dependencies. For example, pumping stations in DC Water's system could be affected by this, and that would have a much broader effect on the region. We also then will identify projects that will then help us avoid or mitigate the risks that have been identified through this matter. There's going to be some other values that are not directly part of this, but that we will get the value from this work. In particular, all of the localities of the region and others will get better design data to be able to use looking forward and doing projects. And I think there's a really interesting use in the work that is the Coastal Hazard System Rapid Protections, the Coastal Hazard Rapid Protection System, where a lot of the simulations that will be done through this will be useful for emergency response and planning for emergencies. For example, if a hurricane does come up the river, come up the bay and push the water up, we'll be able to do some rapid simulations based upon the work that has been done in the past to look at what is likely to get flooded. This whole work will result in kind of a probabilistic picture of potential flooding, but we'll be able to get down to specific of these 1,000 or 1,100 or so actual or synthetic storms that have been modeled, we'll be able to look at those specific ones, and as we develop more finely-meshed information for our region, be able to use that for both long-term planning and short-term emergency response. As I mentioned, this is a three-by-three study. We kicked it off in July, so we have through July 17th of 2020 to get it done. We have formed a project team. The project team includes the Corps, COG, NCPC, local governments that are affected by the area, including the District Prince George's, Fairfax County, Alexandria, and Arlington, as I mentioned, the airport. Utilities such as DC Water will be reaching out to the natural gas and electric utilities, pipeline companies such as Plantation, that have critical infrastructure in the areas, too. We'll also be reaching more broadly out to stakeholders as we go through the process. There also will be federal environmental assessment or environmental impact statement done as part of this process when they get to looking at specific projects that might come out of this, which will also have a public outreach component. So the scope, the first pieces that we're working at through December is to develop the project management plan, which will set the stage for the three years' worth of work. It'll have scope, schedule, and budget. Again, we'll be looking at the modeling, vulnerability assessments, identifying critical infrastructure economics, so it'll lay out the whole process. In the schedule, we have started to hold work meetings with affected parties to be able to get their input. First one was actually yesterday, and as I said, we'll have the stakeholder input. And then the budget, we will be tying down all of the non-federal share. We are not asking for financial commitments from the federal partners, because there is already a federal appropriation, and the match will be coming from the non-federal partners, including COG, as well as the localities and some of the other organizations, such as the airport and the utilities. More broadly, the schedule will take us out through July 2020. Again, by this December, we'll have the project management plan. By September 2018, we will have identified many of the alternatives that could be put in place to mitigate the risk or avoid the risk. They will then go through agency analysis. Localities will be able to look at the types of projections of storms and use them in their design and planning processes right away, so even as early as 2018, we'll be using the output of the work here. Next steps, again, we will be working with all of NCPC and the federal partners and our local partners to do all the data gathering, the PMP, again, looking at these alternative milestones or the alternatives that we have. As far as specifically for NCPC, again, your continued staff participation and coordination with the federal partners is very much appreciated, and it's something that we really could not do this without. The federal agencies themselves that they will be reaching out to will help have input into the scope, will be providing data, some of the studies that have been talked about in the past, even today, that affect this area will become input into the study, and again, they will be able to advise all of us on the recommendations. As commissioners, we appreciate your support, and we hope to have your continued involvement, both you individually and as you go back to your organizations, to let them know that this is going on, that this is a priority, that this is something that is very real that we have to deal with. The primary study contacts are here. Please feel free to contact them if you have any particular questions. Feel free to contact me also, but these are the ones who will know the answers probably more detail than I. And they're the Corps team that are working with all of the partners on this, and they can reach out to all of the other members of the Army Corps of Engineers or COG or other federal team members or local governments, as is needed. So I've tried to be fairly quick and a high level for you now, because we're just getting started, and introduce this to you, and be glad to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walls. Questions, Ms. Walls?
I want to be clear that COG is the point, is your point, is the point organization.
We are the non-federal sponsor, so jointly with the Corps of Engineers, we are the two lead.
We'll look forward to having you back periodically.
We'd be glad to come back. I think as the alternatives are developed and they're a little bit more real and in front of you, may be a good time to come back.
Sure. Thank you very much. We will return to the action item agenda. Well, there are a couple of things. One is, Ms. Skylar, do you have a legislative update to do?
I actually do. I wanted to report that the Global War on Terrorism Memorial Act has been signed by the President and become public law, and this bill allows the Global War on Terror Memorial Foundation to establish the National Global War on Terrorism Memorial as a commemorative work on federal land in the District of Columbia to commemorate and honor the members of the Armed Forces who served on active duty in support of the global war on terrorism.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Skylar? So I think the last item on our agenda is item number 6A, and that's the approval of the revised submission guidelines and NEPA regulations, and it is submitted by our staff. The Commission previously released these documents for public review and comment back in May, and these revisions respond to the administration's goals for efficient, effective federal review procedures. I want to note that Ms. Sullivan, Mr. Fliss, Ms. Skylar, and their departments have worked on this for two years, also with the assistance of very good outside consultants. The focus has been updating the guidelines with a keen eye toward the applicant's experience, making them more efficient, easier, cleaner, clearer, while, of course, meeting all federal regulations and requirements that we have to meet as an organization. We've had lots of public comment and interviews with users. It's not something we did in a vacuum, by any stretch, and lots of stakeholders have been involved with this, so it's been an extraordinary staff effort, and the Commission is grateful. Mr. Fliss?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. As you've mentioned, over the last year or more, staff has worked to update the submission guidelines, and the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, regulations is a way to improve our plan and project review process. Both form the foundation of the plan and project review, which is the predominant focus of you as a Commission. As mentioned, in May, you authorized the release of the draft submission guidelines and NEPA regulations for public comment. A number of recommendations were received, and both documents have been updated in response to that feedback. Staff is here today to recommend Commission approval of the final submission guidelines and NEPA regulations. As the Chairman has mentioned, revising the guidelines and regulations is an important step, which aims to make the process clear and understandable, streamlined where possible, and ultimately create better planning outcomes for you as a Commission, applicants, staff, as well as the public. The current administration, through several recent executive orders, has placed a significant emphasis on improving agency efficiency, and staff have proactively identified opportunities to streamline procedures and realign activities that are more appropriately managed at the local level. As such, we believe that these changes are responsive to administration goals. So very quickly, what are the submission guidelines? Simply, they guide the plan and project review process. Agencies that submit their proposals to you as a Commission follow the requirements of... of proceed through the steps that are laid out in the guidelines. They tell applicants what to submit, describe the stages of review and provide a roadmap for staff, applicants, the public and the commission in terms of interaction and engagement. The NEPA regulations, which are a separate document, inform the submission guidelines by describing how NCPC will comply with the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. The Council of Environmental Quality, or CEQ, requires all federal agencies to adopt their own NEPA procedures. By contrast, the Advisory Council of Historic Preservation has adopted regulations for compliance with the National Historic Preservation Act, and all agencies must follow those. Together, the guidelines and the regulations inform the review process. Regarding the NEPA regulations, staff worked closely with CEQ through the process and coordinated with ACHP on questions related to Section 106 or Historic Preservation. CEQ approval was also necessary before releasing the draft policy for public comment. And CEQ has also reviewed and approved the final regulations with mostly minor technical comments, which have been incorporated into the redline version, which you have at your seats. There was one other specific change, which I'm going to discuss, discuss in a little more detail later in the presentation. For both, for both documents, we identified a number of challenges. First, and most simply, the existing guidelines hadn't been updated in some time. The review stages were not distinct, and the stages were misaligned with both NEPA and Section 106. Regarding the NEPA regulations, many of the same challenges. They lacked organization and clarity, and the stages of review were not well-aligned with applicant's process or the NEPA stages. As a result, staff identified three objectives to address these issues. First, both the guidelines and regulations should be clear, accessible and efficient, and respond to applicants' needs. Second, the review stages should align with NEPA to save time and resources in the planning process. And finally, they should allow some projects to be exempt from review where there is no federal interest. So as I mentioned, the Commission in May authorized the 45-day public comment period with two public meetings held. After the comment period, we've been working to revise both documents, and we're here today in September for your final review and approval. So we also had, in addition, public meetings, individual meetings with several other agencies and interested parties, including the District of Columbia Office of Planning, Department of Defense, the District of Columbia State Historic Preservation Office, Smithsonian Institution, GSA. We also spoke with planning directors from the jurisdictions, as well as the coordinating committee. So now I'm going to walk you through the major changes for each document. Starting with the submission guidelines, there were five major groups of comments. I'm going to try to go through these rather quickly and include staff's response and then any changes that were made to the document. So first, we had a number of comments noting that it would be beneficial to have additional information regarding, excuse me, a variety of topics that are related to NCPC's mission and project review responsibilities. We agreed with this, that the context and information can be helpful to applicant agencies. And as a way to help streamline the guidelines, this additional information is going to be captured in separate resource guides. These will explain in more detail other aspects of NCPC's procedures, as well as its responsibilities. And this really allows the guidelines to focus on the submission requirements themselves. So here you can see a list of the different resource guides that will provide additional information on a range of issues and topics. These were going to be developed over time and released over the next few months. I'll also mention that the new NCPC website, which you heard about earlier, will provide an important source of information, including these resource guides. Applicants, the public, as well as other stakeholders, will have easy access to these user-friendly materials regarding these topics related to the submission and review process. In addition, the website will help improve the public participation process through timely updates and details on the commission process. So here you can see on the screen a snapshot from the new website, which shows NCPC's review authorities, and this particularly is the Planning Act. Second, we had some comments focused on the concept review stage, including its applicability, submission requirements and alignment with other reviews, such as the Commission of Fine Arts. In response, the guidelines have been clarified to indicate when a concept review might be required. We've also adjusted the level of design for this stage, as well as clarified the NEPA documentation requirements. We also heard a comment that suggested that this stage should directly align with the Commission of Fine Arts concept review. While the reviews are intended to align when possible, the prudent two processes are different, as CFA does not have a preliminary review stage, and NCPC also has responsibilities for NEPA in Section 106 that may not apply to CFA. So in this instance, staff will work with applicants to understand other agency reviews and provide guidance and coordinating. Moving on to number three, several comments requested clarification regarding the NEPA documentation required at each review stage. In particular, some of the language wasn't as clear as it could be. We agreed with these comments and the guidelines have been revised for clarity. Information regarding NEPA has also been consolidated into one portion of the submission tables under NEPA. We've also updated the Section 106 documentation for each stage. Some comments, and you'll hear about this a little bit later as well, also asked about the integration of Section 106 in NEPA. The guidelines have been developed to allow these processes to work in coordination. And as I've already described, the documentation required at each stage of review allows this coordination to happen, including the necessary public involvement and engagement. Next, several comments requested clarification regarding specific submission requirements. Most of these recommendations were really good. We've incorporated them into the new, into the revised guidelines. And these included things like stormwater, security and programming. We've also added, added back guidance regarding site acquisitions. And also note that the new website is organized to follow the submission guidelines with the particular requirements for each review stage. So an applicant can just select their project type and then the review stage, and they'll be able to pull up the requirements for each. And this is again, shown on the screenshot in front of you.
We, at one time, had a very good kind of picture-flow diagram. Is that document was for our purposes, but is that going to be on the website?
The picture-flow of the?
Of the process.
The process, yes.
Yeah, that was really excellent.
Yep, definitely. And then finally, for the submission guidelines, there were several other comments related to a variety of just other updates. For example, the expiration of the commission's final review was not previously tied to any particular milestone. The guidelines have been updated to reflect that the project should have initiated construction within that timeframe. Staff has also renamed Chapter Two from Common Projects to Site Building and Park Projects. And this is basically to more accurately describe those actual projects that would be submitted in that category. We've also updated the flooding language to eliminate outdated references. And also, we have updated the process for notifying the public regarding review exceptions. Chapter eight of the submission guidelines identifies exceptions that allow staff to exempt a project from commission review. Generally, this occurs when there's no federal interest or the project is a simple replacement in kind. In response to comments, we've heard about the transparency of this process. Staff has proposed to list the exceptions on the tentative agenda to allow for public notice. And if a member of the public would like to comment on one of these exceptions, it would then be moved to an action item for commission review. If no member of the public comments, then staff will inform the applicant and the project will be qualified for that exception. This will also work very similar to how the delegated actions work. And as you're aware, very, very rarely do delegated actions actually get moved on to the commission's full review agenda. Okay, now moving on to the NEPA regulations. Again, there were five major groups of comments. I'm going to walk you through these again with the staff response and any changes. First, as I've mentioned earlier, there were several comments addressing the elimination of the Section 106 procedures from the regulations. As you may, as you may recall, I mentioned that the National Historic Preservation Act includes the specific procedures that agencies must follow. So unlike NEPA, we are not required to adopt our own regulations, just follow those that are already in place. Some commenters were concerned that references to Section 106 were eliminated and that it suggested less of a commitment to historic preservation. This is not the case. The submission guidelines and the regulations still support the integrated NEPA and Section 106 process, including evaluating impacts to historic properties. Second, the role of non-federal agencies in the NEPA process did generate a number of comments as well. In particular, one comment noted that the cooperating agency status could not apply to non-federal agencies, and these could include such as the agencies such as the Smithsonian. Cooperating agencies are federal agencies, federal, state and local agencies who help develop information and prepare environmental analysis for NEPA purposes. By definition, they cannot include non-federal agencies. So in response to this issue, we have proposed to use a memorandum of agreement with those non-federal agencies to establish the process for achieving NEPA compliance. We think this is a sound approach that will help define the process and responsibilities both for NCPC as well as the non-federal applicants. And it also helps avoid using this formal definition of cooperating agency. Third, we heard from several federal agencies that cosigning a finding of no significant impact or a FONZI or a Record of Decision, a ROD, may not be feasible. These again, are the documents that are prepared at the conclusion of the NEPA process that describe the decision and outcome of the proposed action. We acknowledge that it may not always be feasible to cosign documents, but the goal of streamlining the process should be, should remain. And as such, the regulations state that cosigning is optional. However, we note that this practice is consistent with the administration's approach to simplifying reviews such as NEPA. I also mentioned that CEQ just recently completed their review of the final regulations and provided some additional comments. Most of these were minor in nature. There was one comment that did require an update to the regulations and the guidelines. CEQ had remarked about the timing of the signature of the final decision documents, the rods or the FONZIs, as it relates to the commission's final approval. We believe we have developed some appropriate language to address this concern and also address concerns of the applicant agencies who might be affected. So at the conclusion of my presentation and the Executive Director's recommendation, the Executive Director will suggest an amendment to the EDR to help address this issue. So moving on to the fourth area, several commenters requested or questioned the inclusion of categorical exclusions or CADECs that allowed NCPC to use the exclusion of another agency when NCPC didn't have a CADEX. And just as a reminder, a CADEX is essentially a finding that there will be no environmental impacts and that no additional environmental review is necessary. So one CADEX that was removed would have allowed NCPC to use another federal agency's CADEX. And after further staff discussion and consultation with CEQ, we've removed this CADEX. Some of the others had not been used in over 10 years, so we don't think removing them will impact our work. And we've updated our remaining CADECs to cover a majority of the projects that might have otherwise required an environmental assessment. And then finally, several commenters expressed concern that the regulations did not talk enough about the public participation process. In particular, they want a clarification on how the public will be notified when a CADEX was applied. The new regulations indicate that documents requiring publishing will be posted on the NCPC website. As you know, there's also a section in the EDR that talks about NEPA compliance, and as part of the record would indicate whether a CADEX was applied. I also noted previously, the new submission guidelines will allow for better coordination of NEPA in Section 106, as well as opportunities for public participation. We expect to come back to the commission in the future with an update to the public participation plan. So in conclusion, overall, the feedback we received was positive, and the changes that were proposed have helped improve both documents. After your approval, we will incorporate any changes made today and will finalize any minor edits for clarification or consistency. A notice of final rulemaking will be published in the final register, and both will be effective after 30 days. Staff will work with applicants during the transition, but we suspect most will want to use the new guidelines because it'll just be better for them. We also will be updating the delegated actions in the future, and we'll return to you with that separately. Staff believes that in sum, the proposed changes will further improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the process, and therefore, it is the Executive Director's recommendation that the commission approve the final submission guidelines and the NEPA regulations, noting that after commission approval, staff will incorporate any changes at your direction and complete any minor edits necessary for accuracy and consistency across both documents, and further, that the final guidelines and regulations will be effective 30 days after the notice of final rulemaking is published in the, in the federal register. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll turn it over to the Executive Director.
Thank you, Mr. Fliss. Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Matt. First of all, I'd like to thank members of the public as well as our agencies for participating in this process and all the great feedback that we received. So what I'm going to do is actually amend my own EDR, and I want to give you some background so you understand what is going on. The environmental regulations, as Mr. Fliss mentioned, have to be approved by the White House Council for Environmental Quality before they can be posted on to the federal registers. So we received clearance for the draft document, but one thing that CEQ had asked us to review was the issue of submission of a signed FONZI, or finding of no significant impact or a Record of Decision, prior to the commission's final approval of a project proposed in a GSA or NPS submission. This could also apply to DOD. The concern really is, is what happens if the commission requests changes to the project, you know, when they're reviewing this at the final stage? And whether these changes that require, may require subsequent changes to the signed FONZI or ROD, or perhaps the EA or EIS as well? So, so just to put this in a nutshell, when you review a final application, we have to issue a FONZI or ROD. Typically, since you're at final, there are very small changes that have to be made. And typically, what is signed in that FONZI or ROD, well, the content of that is typically okay, because it's basically the project that you've reviewed that has gone through all the EIS or EA analysis. And so typically, you're fine. So we're talking about a very rare occasion when this might happen, but CEQ had asked us to make sure that that is covered in our environmental regulations. So GSA and the Park Service have, has raised questions about this. I think we've come to an agreement in principle at this point, which would require redrafting of several portions of the environmental regulations. As I mentioned, these have to be approved by the CEQ prior to final posting. So I have a suggestion, since we have an agreement in principle on how to proceed with the language, with the concurrence of NPS and GSA, I do have a recommendation in terms of how to proceed so we could get the bulk of the submission guidelines and environmental regulations passed today, or reviewed and approved today, and then a process to move forward with the changes. So what I'm going to suggest is that the commission approve the final NEPA regulations, except those sections that will require change to reflect the consensus view of NCPC, GSA, NPS, and will develop the agreed-upon language. So after this meeting, and over the next few days, we'll work with our partners at GSA and NPS to redraft this language. And this will approximately affect four portions, four or five portions?
Four or five.
In the environmental regulations. Once we get agreement, I, we will send the revised language to CEQ for their approval and clearance. So we need to do that before we can effectuate the, the changes. I would suggest that, in this case, since we have an agreement in principle, that you delegate to the Executive Director the authority to pass along that language to CEQ and to approve that language once we received a clearance from CEQ. So, you know, they've looked at it, NPS, GSA's are happy, you know, we have a series of language changes that CEQ has, has approved. And then after that, as Mr. Fliss mentioned, then we have to submit that to the federal register for publication. There's a 30-day period, and then it becomes our regulations after that period. So at this point, I think we have a, you know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we have an agreement in principle in terms of how to proceed, the, the content of the revised language, that this is simply, you cannot approve the language today as part of your action because it has to be cleared by CEQ. So once that comes back from CEQ, then we'll just handle that administratively. So that would be my suggestion. And then we also have specific language for the EDR once you're ready to take on that topic. So I just wanted to provide that, that context.
Any objections to the path forward that Mr. Acosta has suggested?
No. Thank you for accommodating our concerns.
So I could read into the record the proposed motion, and I guess we'll have to debate that and consider that. So let me put onto the record the amendments. So let me put onto the record the amendments. First is to approve the final National Environmental Policy Act regulations, except those sections addressing the issue of submission of a signed ROD or FONZI. Next one would be direct staff to work with NPS and GSA to reach final resolution on language for the sections at issue. The next would be delegate to the Executive Director the authority to approve the revised language agreed to by the parties and submit the revised language to CEQ for approval. And then notes that once CEQ approval of the revised language is approved, the NEPA regulations will be published in the federal register, and it will also retain the two notes below. So that would be the proposed set of changes.
Sorry, and what you just read incorporates the two notes that are there?
Yes. And one on top.
And the one on the top.
So it would basically be revision to approve the final NEPA regulations, and that would probably fall under it. So withhold the approval for the FONZI and the ROD until that process is concluded. Hope that makes sense.
Any additional comments?
So not relating to this extra language, I just want to thank the staff for all of their work in trying to make the NCPC submission process and all the steps along the way, and work better with the processes that the Park Service uses, because we have our own particular ways of doing things. And we also have particular ways of doing things with memorials in particular, and I really appreciate all the changes that have been incorporated into the regulations so that that process can work a bit more smoothly. So I really do appreciate that. I appreciate also the last-minute wrangling of language. I think we are okay with the latest version of language, but I understand that there may still be issues, so we'll get that all sorted out in the next couple of days.
I just want to also thank the staff and the outreach, the feedback that you got, and the way you incorporated that feedback. This seems to me as a well-managed and well-executed process. The feedback is such an important part of what we do, and we can't work in a vacuum. But I think the overall result is a really very logical and consistent package, particularly the guidelines feel all of a sudden like something normal people can understand. And the alignment with NEPA certainly helps that process. So I think sort of the last, my comment that I wrote after reading all of that is, you know, it conveys to me and the new website, which all this will go on to, that NCPC is open for business. Thank you very much.
So is there a motion on the four amendments, four-line amendments?
Not yet. There is neither a motion.
Oh, yeah, second.
I'm asking for one. A motion on the...
Yes, no motion.
There has been a motion and a second on the amendments. All in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Now, sensing no further discussion on the EDR, is there a motion on the EDR as amended? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed no? Thank you. So that completes our agenda for the day? Kind of lost track of things. I think that completes our agenda for today. So thank you all very much, and we will see you next month.